I'd like to call to order the February 11th, 2021 zoning board of examiners and appeals meeting. I'll start with the roll call.
Ellen McKay?
Here.
Tonya Hickok?
Here.
Dave Hale?
Here.
Monica Emmerton?
Here.
Jonathan Lang?
Here.
Jackie Savina?
Here.
Taylor Quinn?
Here.
Andrew Romerdal?
February 11th.
Here.
Del Smythe is excused, thank you, you have a quorum.
I'd just like to welcome Andrew Romerdal to the board. Welcome Andrew.
Thank you.
The next is minutes for Thursday, December 10th, 2021. Does anybody wish to pull the minutes for review? Seeing none, I will move for approval. Can I ask for a positive motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Shall we vote? Shall you speak to your motion?
I believe the minutes are correct as I remember the meeting, and I will be voting to approve.
Any objections? Seeing none, that motion is approved. Next order of business is disclosures. Anybody have disclosures?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to disclose, I don't know if it's a conflict, but wanted to disclose a potential on agenda item H3. There's a party listed in the documents, heir and lotteret, not a party to the case, but associated that I have a personal and professional relationship with, so.
Do you foresee a financial interest or substantial private interest in the matter?
Uh, no, I don't.
I'll entertain a positive motion to direct Board Member Romerdal to proceed, to participate. Ms. McKay?
I move that Andrew Romerdal participate in case number 2021-0014.
Shall we vote?
Need a second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can you speak to your motion, Ms. McKay?
Without any financial type of interest, I think that, and his statement that he can be impartial, that I'm going to support my motion.
Thank you. Do I have any objections? Seeing none, we direct Commissioner Romerdal to participate in case 2021-14. Do we have any other disclosures? Seeing none, I have a disclosure. I will be recusing myself from case 2021-014 as I was a part of the specific case use I do believe we have to vote. Can I have a motion?
A motion that you are allowed to recuse? So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I believe we need to vote.
Mr. Hale?
Is a yes mean that she does recuse herself?
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Oh. Mr. Hale, you were asking if it's to direct her to be recused? It's to direct her to participate?
Yeah. Yeah, so if I vote yes, that directs her to not participate.
It's a positive motion through the chair, it's a positive motion to direct her to participate, so if you vote nay against it, she will be recused.
Okay, then I vote yea to recuse her.
So it's a no.
It's a positive motion to direct her to participate in the case. If you vote yes for her to participate.
Okay.
Okay, so it's a nay vote?
Nay vote.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Nay.
Ms. Savina?
Nay.
Ms. Savina, there was some echo. Mr. Lang?
Nay.
Ms. Emmerton?
Nay.
Mr. Quinn?
Nay.
Mr. Romerdal?
Nay.
And Ms. Hickok abstains. So back to Ms. Savina?
Nay.
That was a nay, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I also have another disclosure, I was absent on the date of, in December's meeting, so I will abstain from the consent agenda to vote. Can I have a positive motion?
I move that you be allowed to vote.
Seconded? I believe we have to vote.
And who seconded, Ellen?
Ms. McKay.
Mr. Hale?
No.
Ms. Savina?
No.
Mr. Lang?
No.
Ms. Emmerton?
No.
Mr. Quinn?
No.
Mr. Romerdal?
No.
And Ms. Hickok abstains. Thank you.
Didn't ask me.
Ms. McKay?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We will move forward with the consent agenda. Resolution 2020-14 in regards to case 2021-35, does anyone wish to pull the item?
Can I have a positive motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Seconded? Ms. McKay?
Seconded.
Do I have any objections to the approval? Seeing none, that motion is approved. Now, I believe we are on to the first public hearing. Action by the board shall require the favorable vote of the majority of the fully constituted board. The fully constituted board shall include all members of the board, including vacancies, not excused for conflicts of interest. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be met. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face its final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. The first case we have before us is 2021-2. Will staff, let's see, will staff please describe the notice given?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On December 16th, 2020, 351 public hearing notices were sent out to neighboring property owners. No public comments had been received, and notice of the public hearing was also mailed to the Taku Campbell Community Council, which did not comment.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The petitioner requests a variance from AMC 2106-020, Table Dimensional Standards for Commercial Industrial Districts. It's to allow a side setback requirement of five feet for the west property boundary of Track B in the I-2 district. The property has tent canopies constructed adjacent to the existing 10-foot landscape easement on the western boundary. The adjacent municipal-owned park property is currently zoned R2M mixed residential district and requires a 40-foot setback per the table. So the planning department is currently working on a project in 2021 to rezone dedicated parkland to PR, which is Parks and Recreation District. The subject property's minimum side and rear setbacks would then be zero or at least five, and the existing 10-foot landscape easement remains per the plat 2008-15, and any structures would need to remain outside of this easement if a variance is granted. Staff finds that Condition A is partially met, there are no streams, wetlands, or steep slopes on this lot, and the lot size is 4.85 acres adjacent to industrial zone land to the north and south. The parcel to the west of the property is the Campbell Creek Green Belt, which is zoned R2M mixed residential. And as I mentioned earlier, that property is undergoing a rezone process to correct the zoning designation of the property as Parks and Recreation. The only difference about this lot is the property abuts R2M zoning, which requires a 40-foot setback due to the residential industrial compatibility component of the zoning. Standard B is partially met, the lot is a conforming lot of record, and other than the tent canopy structures, the existing buildings meet the required setbacks. The 40-foot setback, which is strict application of the code based on adjoining R2M zoning district, creates a hardship for the property, which is part of the next door, which is the Campbell Creek Green Belt, which is not used as residential property, which is the basis of the separation requirement. The PR zoning district would require zero or at least five for the subject I-2 property. Standard C is partially met, the Parks residential zoning designation creates an unusually large setback for the property owner and creates a hardship that is not self-imposed. These circumstances did not result from the actions of the applicant. The current owner discovered the encroachment when they applied for a building permit to construct an addition to the existing cold storage building, which is also on the property. Standard D has been met, there are no structure separation violations, drainage and runoff do not appear to be issues, there's been no objections from the neighbors or the Taku Campbell Community Council, and the most affected neighbor to the west is the Campbell Creek Green Belt, where there are no residential structures. And as noted, the 10-foot landscape easement still holds per the plat. Standard E has been met, the requested variance will not change the character of the zoning district, it's dimensional and not a use variance, and the I-2 district is intended primarily as an industrial activity area for a public and private heavy manufacturing. Granting the variance will comply with the required minimum side setbacks when the adjacent property is zoned to Parks and Recreation. Standard F is met, there are no identified health or safety issues with this property. The owner is seeking relief from the side setback in order to enjoy the use of an existing tent canopy structure. Garage, carports, marine operations, storage yards, and warehouses are permitted by right structure in the I-2 district. Standard G is not related to ADA. Standard H is found to be met, the petitioner is requesting the minimum variance that would allow the existing structure to remain in place if the adjacent property is zoned PR for its current uses parkland. The five-foot setback would meet the standards of Table 2106-2 for commercial and industrial districts. Staff finds that after all eight standards have been met to be granted, and they find that approval criteria A, B, and C are not met, staff recommends denial of the variance, but after, if the board finds all eight standards, then the approval should be subject to the conditions one and two found on page six of the staff packet. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Ms. McKay?
In the packet, on page 13, there's a letter, and in that letter it says, "The owner will produce a building permit for structures and adjust their location as required by the variance decision." Should we make that a condition?
Through the chair, Ms. McKay, you could, you could if that's what the board wishes, however, once you grant this, if you grant the variance, their plan all along with, they have an outstanding building permit, in order to close all that, they're going to follow through with moving, complying to the setbacks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions of staff by the board? Ms. McKay?
In the packet, on page 13, there's a letter, and in that letter it says, "The owner will produce a building permit for structures and adjust their location as required by the variance decision." Should we make that a condition?
Through the chair, Ms. McKay, you could, you could if that's what the board wishes, however, once you grant this, if you grant the variance, their plan all along with, they have an outstanding building permit, in order to close all that, they're going to follow through with moving, complying to the setbacks.
Are there any additional questions of staff by the board? Just a friendly reminder to please mute the bridge line. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Will the applicant or the applicant representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record?
Okay, this is Chris Cole, I represent the owner and the petitioner, Paul Gerhart, for the property. I just wanted to kind of go through my understanding of the three standards that are partially met. First of all, the property is understood as an I-2 property, it's abutting the Campbell Creek Green Belt, that's our west property line. The abutting Campbell Creek Green Belt property is zoned R2M, which is a residential zoning for a park. The I-2, R2M setback is 40 feet. The reality is, this condition should be zero or five feet when it's based on an I-2 setback against a Parks and Recreation zoning. So we also know that the 2040 acreage land use plan has the Campbell Creek Green Belt properties as PR zonings, and the planning department is in the process of rezoning these properties, but we don't really know when these will be finalized, so that's really why we're asking for the variances, because it might be a long process to get these rezonings done. So we're requesting that the setback on our west property line be set as if the property adjacent to us is not a residential property. Of the eight standards in the variance, the planning staff agreed that five of them are met, three of them are partially met. I just want to talk briefly about the three that are partially met. The first one is, there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, including but not limited to streams, wetlands, or slope, and those circumstances are not applicable to other land in the same zoning district. So basically, the staff says that we're partially met on this. They state that the Alaska Supreme Court states peculiarities in the specific property sufficient to warrant a grant of variance must arise from the physical conditions of the land itself, which distinguish it from other land in the general area. I think there are peculiarities to our site that would warrant a grant of a variance because the Campbell Creek Green Belt abutting our property is a physical condition of the land, and although it is not on our property, it does impact our property because it is not zoned Parks and Recreation like its actual use. So I believe that our property has extraordinary physical circumstances that meet this standard. The staff report goes on to say that they are rezoning the Campbell Creek Green Belt property to correct the zoning designation of the property as Parks and Recreation, so this is a process. I think that this statement alone warrants the variance because we're all agreeing that this, that when this rezone happens, the setbacks would become zero or five feet, but we just don't know when this change is going to take effect. So that's the first standard. The second standard, B, because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of the code creates an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinance. The staff, the staff report says the standard is partially met. Basically, it goes into the 40-foot setback, which is a strict application of the code based on the adjoining R2M zoning district, creates a hardship as the property is part of the Campbell Creek Green Belt and not used as residential property, which is the basis of the separation requirement. So basically, I believe from the staff text, they agree that there is a hardship because the owners of the property can't use the full buildable area of their property that would be allowed if the property did not abut a residential property, so which it isn't a residential property, isn't used as a residential property, but it's just zoned as an R2M. So I believe we meet that standard, too. So the next standard is C, the hardship is not self-imposed, special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. So the staff report response on this standard is that it's partially met, they go on to talk about more of the stream and wetlands and slopes and physical conditions of the land, which I think we meet, but, so I think that they agree that the hardship is not self-imposed, but then they go on to say, "Every zoning regulation necessarily imposes some burden on property because by definition it limits the uses to which land may be put so long as all land similarly situated is subject to the same restrictions." Hardship caused by the zoning classification alone does not constitute a valid ground for a variance. So hardship caused by the zoning classification alone does not constitute a valid ground for a variance, that's true, however, the key sentence in that paragraph is, "So long as all land similarly situated is subject to the same restrictions." So I would just say that not all I-2 properties abutting a park are subject to the same restrictions of a 40-foot setback. So I believe the circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience, and they're actually a hardship that is not self-imposed based on that, based on other properties that would be I-2 against a park. So in conclusion, the adjacent zoning of the Green Belt as R2M, when it should be PR, is creating a situation on our I-2 property such that we cannot use it the same as all other I-2 properties that are similarly situated. So we are requesting that the setback on our west property line be set as if the property adjacent to us is not a residential property as defined in the I-2 zoning. So that's it, thank you for your time.
You have three minutes and 21 seconds for rebuttal.
So Paul, would you like to speak?
Oh, I was going to ask if there were any questions of the applicant by the board members.
Oh, sure.
Seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant by staff?
Madam Chair, there's none of the applicant, I was just going to follow up at some point to Ms. McKay's earlier question.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2021-2? Seeing none, we will move forward with, the public hearing will be closed. No? Staff, could you please respond to Ms. McKay's earlier question?
Sure, so through the chair, Ms. McKay, so the reason this variance came about was they had an open building permit for a structure, and they found this in violation, so therefore, if we grant this, if we see number two, they are going to have to provide us with an as-built that's going to show those structures complying with the variance if it's granted. They won't be able to close their permit without resolving all of this. It is partially slightly in good faith, thinking that they'll get a building permit to move those if it's required for the ones. We just kind of left that up to the applicant on good faith that they'll do that because they're going to have to close their permit, they're going to have to come to us to do the notice of zoning action, and an as-built that shows the structures. As I said, if the board wants to add the condition, obtain a building permit to move the tents if necessary, that could be applied. However, I think it's sufficiently covered.
Thank you. Mr. Cole, I believe you have three minutes and 21 seconds for your rebuttal. Would Mr. Cole or Mr. Gerhart like to speak on their rebuttal? Time remaining, three minutes and 21 seconds.
Oh, sorry, I have no objection to it.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat yourself?
I have no objection, can you hear, I have no objection to put in any conditions on building permits or anything for the tent structures if that becomes a requirement, so, or a future as-built requirement.
Was anything additional you'd like to add in your rebuttal time?
No, I think that's enough, so.
All right, I will now close the public hearing. All right, I will now close the public hearing. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Everton, may I have a second? Mr. Romedal, seconded. Ms. Emmerton, could you speak to your motion?
I will speak on my motion first. I would like to move to approve case number 2021-0002 based on staff's conditions one and two on page six of the staff report. And I can go ahead and speak to my motion now, if that's all right to you through the chair?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. I do intend to support my motion, and I am basing that on staff's findings, and then I will also speak to the additional findings for A, B, and C that were partially met based on staff. I think standard, or finding number A, that standard is fully met. The Campbell Creek Green Belt does create an exceptional physical circumstance that is not common for I-2 districts. I also think when you add in the rezon that is coming, that they will be in compliance, that they have met finding number A. Finding number B, I will also argue is fully met, and the same physical circumstances abutting this I-2 district is not normal for most I-2 districts being next to the Campbell Creek Center, and then, oh my goodness, the Campbell Creek Green Belt, sorry, excuse me. And then number C, I will also argue this one is fully met, and I agree with the applicant that the line in every zoning, the final line in there that states, trying to find it now, burden on the property limits land use, like they are extremely limited because not all I-2 properties are going to be similar in the same situation, so other I-2 properties would be allowed full use of the land, but these guys are not allowed. I do intend to support my motion, and those are my findings to support my motion.
Ms. McKay, would you speak to your second?
I didn't second.
Mr. Romedal, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess Emmerton covered most of the points. I would just, I guess I would speak to under finding A, the staff's comment that the property's undergoing a rezon process to correct the zoning into a PR zone kind of speaks to the fact that, you know, under those circumstances, I don't think this would have been the same issue. So other than that, again, the pointing to the fact that, other than kind of the oddity of having the R2M on the Green Belt lot, again, it wouldn't be the issue because they wouldn't have the same setbacks.
Could we take a roll hall vote? Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Romedal?
Yes.
And Chair Hickok?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move on to the second public hearing of the evening, case 2021-11. The applicant is Trana and Jake Masloff. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Chair. On January 13, 2021, 237 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 2103-020H notice. No public comments were received, and the Northeast Community Council did not provide comment.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will staff please present the case?
Thank you, Chair. This is a request from AMC 2106-020A to allow an existing structure to encroach 2.3 feet into a required 10-foot secondary front setback and 1.5 feet into a required 5-foot side yard setback. This is a corner lot, and the required setbacks are as follows: 20 feet primary front setback along Ninth Avenue, a 10-foot secondary front setback along Edward Street, 5-foot side yard setback to the east, and a 10-foot rear setback. The encroachment was discovered when the applicant filed for a land use permit in November of 2020. The property previously was granted legal non-conforming rights for a 3-foot side yard setback encroachment to the east portion of the structure on July 24, 2007, located on page 19 of your staff packet. The current ASBilt dated November 18, 2020, on page 16 of your staff packet, does not reflect the same building footprint. The previous owner applied for and was granted a building permit to construct in addition to the western portion of the original structure in 2009. The associated ASBilt dated October 2, 2009, located on page 31 of your staff packet, does not show an encroachment to the secondary front yard setback. The current property owner purchased this lot in April 2020 without knowledge of the Staff finds standard A is not met. There are no extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, including streams, wetlands, or slope. Standard B is not met. The original single-family home constructed on this lot was placed within a conforming location with illegal non-conforming rights. There are no exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances which affect this lot. Standard C is met. The hardship is not self-imposed. The current property owner purchased this property without knowledge or disclosure of the encroachments. Standard D is met. Given the character, history, and zoning of the neighborhood, it does not appear granting of this variance will adversely affect the use of the adjacent properties. Standard E is met. The R2M district is primarily intended for single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwelling units. Granting of this variance to encroach within the secondary front and side yard setbacks will not permit a use other than already permitted in Title 21. Standard F is met. It does not appear granting this encroachment will result in any negative impacts to the health and safety of the people in the municipality. Standard G is met. Standard is not applicable to single-family residences. Standard H is met. The original house constructed in 1968 encroached 3 feet into the required 5-foot side yard setback. The house existed prior to zoning and was granted legal non-conforming rights in July 27, 2004. The current ASBilt dated November 18 does not reflect the same building permit, so the structure may no longer enjoy those previously established non-conforming rights. The 2009 ASBilt and building permit 2004-0930 showed a structure and a conforming location and does not depict an encroachment into the required 10-foot secondary front yard setback. This request is a minimum variance required to make use of the land. AMC 2103-240G requires all eight standards be substantially met in order for a variance to be granted. The department finds standards A and B are not met, and standards C through H are met. Given these findings, the department recommends denial of this variance request. If after a public hearing, the board finds that this request meets the approval criteria, it should be subject to conditions listed on page six of your staff report. Thank you.
I believe Member Quinn has a question for staff.
Through the chair, does current code allow you to build a single-family residence with an onsite septic system for a lot that's approximately 10,000 square feet?
Thank you, through the chair, Commissioner Quinn. This structure was constructed prior to zoning requirements that would require onsite systems, typically lots that are over 40,000 square feet. So while it may not be permitted today, it was constructed prior to some of those regulations.
Are there any additional questions of staff by the board?
Yes, I have a follow-up.
Member Quinn, go forward.
So in looking at the southern end of the property, there seems to be an unusual amount of cleanouts on the west and east ends. Do you have any information on the septic system, and was there a potential failure of a septic system?
Thank you, through the chair, Commissioner Quinn. I don't believe there has been any failure of that septic system. It is located south of the structure with some monitoring pipes, but they typically have a 10-foot setback between any of the septic systems, the septic field, to any structures. But the applicant is available to maybe provide more information with that question.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions of the board for staff? Board Member Hale?
Thank you, through the chair. Just wondering if you guys must have a copy of the RL button, the ASBilt, but the plot plan. I'm wondering if you guys had a copy of that and whether it matches this ASBilt exactly. Did you guys look at that?
Thank you, through the chair, Commissioner Quinn. That is on page 31 of your staff packet. While the kind of the footprint of the building looks similar, the dimensions provided differ from the November 2020 ASBilt. That might be a difference in surveying locations, but I couldn't speak to that on why their dimensions differ.
What page was the, so 31 is the, that's the plot plan, huh?
Page 39 is the October 1, 2009 ASBilt that was provided with the building, to close out the building permit that was initially started in 2009.
Okay, thanks.
Board Member Quinn, you have additional questions?
Through the chair, so given that you couldn't permit this current house with an onsite septic system today, would staff agree that this lot is abnormally tight for the structure and having a septic?
Through the chair, Commissioner Quinn, the existing structure meets the other standards in AMC 2106 table, I believe it's table 2106-1 for the standards of the actual house. The septic system does take up a portion of that lot, but staff found that it would not substantially alter the ability to make a conforming structure.
Are there any additional questions from the board for staff? Seeing none, are there any questions of staff by the applicant? Yes, no? The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record? Can you turn on the microphone, please?
Jake Masloff.
Can you spell your last name? Thank you. Please go ahead and present your case.
This is my first time, so before we start, I would like to say to everyone who is here, thank you for giving me your time. Let me tell you about my property. I bought around last year, April 2020. It was built in 1970s. The previous owner did all the renovation and adding of the structure. If we look at the ASBilt, we see that the lot is 10,045 square foot, and it has a septic system located in the backyard. It also have two driveways. It's not paved, it's all rocks, but there is one in the front and one in the back, and a basement entryway behind the house. During this construction, I think that they built it over the distance limit on the yard. I don't know if they applied, if the owner applied for the permit for the addition or the renovation of the house. The right side of the house is supposed to be 5 feet distance from the property line, and the left side of the house is 10 feet, but it ended up an encroachment of 3.5 feet and a 7.7 feet setback. The house was built for an assisted living. It has a ranch-style home. It has a ramp, five-bedroom on the first floor, and a three-bedroom on the basement. Both sides of the walls are bedrooms. If moving it, the two-bedroom will be disappeared because it will be too small to use. I bought the property cash, and I didn't know anything about zoning, so I couldn't have known about this. If I did, I wouldn't buy the property. So I'm here today asking the board to approve my variance. Another thing is, the old ASBilt was, they approved it 10 feet back in 2010, 2009, October 2009. It has 10 feet, and they did another ASBilt last year, and it wasn't 10 feet. It was, I think it was 7.7 feet. So I'm not really sure what happened in that. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Staff, do you have a question?
Question.
I believe Board Member Quinn has a question. I believe Board Member Quinn has a question.
Mr. Masloff, in your application addressing standard A, you said that B, that they did, the previous owner did the addition to the secondary front yard, not the backyard because they installed septic system behind the house and you talked about a lift station as well. Is there any, based on our discussions or anything else that you'd like to add or any other information that you can add about that septic system and maybe any limitations that it would have had to the addition being on the southern end of the house?
Could you repeat that, please? What, what question is that?
On variance standards under A, in response to it, you wrote that the previous owner did the addition to the secondary front yard, not the backyard because of the septic behind the house.
Yeah.
And you said that the, okay, I'm just asking.
Go ahead.
I'm just asking if there's any other information that you could provide, maybe about why that addition was put on the, on the side and not the back if the, if the septic system had constraints for building that addition.
So I was looking at the as-build, it's, so the septic system has taken up pretty much the whole backyard and there's a driveway there. The house, I think the house was built as a duplex. There's a basement, it's separate from the top floor, so and being a duplex, it has to have two parking lots, one in the back, so it's taking up the space there. And then there's another parking lot in the front. I'm not sure how they exactly did that. So I think there's no other way to build this except this way.
Thank you.
Staff, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify from the applicant's presentation, the previous owner did get building permits for their addition. It was a 368-square-foot addition to the west of the existing single-home, single-family home with a basement that was also 368 feet. So that did get a building permit and it was closed out under apartment number 04-0930. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from the board for the applicant? Are there any questions of the applicant by staff?
No, thank you.
So I believe we're going to open up the public hearing and you have 6 minutes and 54 seconds for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 202011? Seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant? Excuse me. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, I believe we have to give Mr. Mala, Masloff, your rebuttal time? Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
No?
No.
Thank you. So the public hearing is now closed and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Positive motion from Member Quinn and seconded by Mr. Hale. Board Member Quinn, could you speak to your motion?
Yes, through the chair, I will be voting to approve my, my motion. I do believe that standard A and B have been met, looking at the plot plan, I think that it's, the light is, or the lot is unusually tight.
Board Member Quinn, if you just state your motion and then we'll go on to the second.
Oh, sorry. Motion.
Second. Can you please restate your motion?
Yes, I will be approving, approving my, voting to approve my motion. I do believe that standard A and B have been met.
No, just state that you moved to approve?
Moved to approve.
Based on conditions?
Based on conditions A and B.
Found on? The conditions found on page six of the case packet?
Conditions found on page three and four of the case packet of the staff report.
So the conditions of approval are noted on pages five and six.
Yes, five and six.
Mr. Hale, on your second?
Yes, I second.
So now, Mr. Quinn, could you speak to your motion?
Okay, I believe, I think that standard A and B have been met. I think that the lot is unusually tight, given what is, given the septic system that it has. And I think that the applicant bought the lot with the, and the best available information to him at the time, with the as-built that he had, showed that it didn't have any zoning or setback violations, but the bigger point is that I don't, I don't believe that there are a whole lot of other options on where that second addition to the house could have been built without encroaching upon the leach field or other parts of the septic system on the southern end of the home. And I agree with staff's findings on all the other standards.
Board Member Hale, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I know the board's seen this before. I've actually presented a case pretty similar to this. It's, it happens when you give legal non-conforming rights to these old, non-zoned lots that were too small. They have septic systems on them, they're, you know, they're there, the houses are there, the septic's there, the lots are really too small, but really there's no choice but to just kind of move forward with what you got. So I think that the, the fact that the lot is so small, it creates an extraordinary physical circumstance that really it's hard to overcome. There's not a lot of room. So I think that the fact that this tiny lot was, is now legally non-conforming is a, is a reason that the standard A is met. And I think that if you, if you adhere to the code strictly, I mean essentially when, when they created the zoning, all of these were created and it, and it's not anybody's fault, it's just the way that things were developed. But I do think that strict adherence to the code does create a hardship because, you know, you're dealing with a tiny lot with a septic on it in a house and, you know, if you want to enjoy the rights that everyone else has, it's, it's really hard. So I think that standard B is met. It is an undue hardship because of the history and, and I don't believe, we're talking about C, that it's self-imposed because this happened, you know, a long time ago. Even though there's been some recent activity, the, the overall condition of it being too small with onsite septic is an old historic problem. So I don't think it's, it's been self-imposed and I agree with staff on D through H.
Thank you, Member Hale. Are there any comments from the board? I just wanted to offer my comments on the case before us. I tend to agree with Members Quinn and Hale. From an engineering standpoint, the, the lot is much too small to do anything with the septic the way it's designed, the way it was historically put in. For a 10,000 acre, 10,000-square-foot lot to bear a septic system is not very common at all in town. It's all public sewer in this area, I believe, so it's an old remnant lot. So I will be supporting the motion. Can we have a roll call vote? Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Rummerdahl?
Yes.
And Chair Hickok?
Yes, thank you.
We are going to take a quick five-minute recess so we can switch chairs.
All right, we're ready to resume the meeting. Ms. Hickok is recused from this. I'm Jonathan Lang, Vice Chair, and I will be running the remainder of the meeting. And we will now begin the appeal with case number 20210014. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there were 436 public hearing notices mailed on January 13th of 2021.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, I will.
Ask for a staff report or what's next?
Next, we'll call upon persons intending to testify on the appeal before the board to execute an oath.
Point of order, point of order. Staff does have a presentation.
Based, based on the procedures I've been given, we need to swear in anyone that's testifying before that.
I'm sorry, I thought you were moving to appellate presentation, my apologies.
Through the chair, any officers of the court are not required to. Thank you.
If you could please approach the microphone?
And this is Becky Lipson speaking on behalf of the petitioner. We do have one individual from our team who may offer testimony of the board wishes, so I would like him to be sworn in.
Absolutely. Will you state your name for the record, please?
Brian Swartzen Schuber.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And if there are no further people that I need to swear in, then staff, please present your outline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Case 20210014 is an appeal of a use determination for a research laboratory proposed to be located in the B3 zoning district. The request for a use determination first came to Planning Department from Ms. Tanya Hickok, who had written a letter of determination and requested a concurrent signature from the current planning manager, Dave Whitfield. After staff review of the letter, Mr. Whitfield signed the concurrence. Staff subsequently received a telephone call from Mr. Tom Nelson, a former municipality of Anchorage planning director, with questions about the letter of concurrence. He suggested there may be inquiries into the determination, so the decision was made that more formal research was needed and staff reached out to Ms. Hickok and asked her to apply for a formal use determination. While researching the information for the determination, some questions about the use came up that were not answered by the materials the applicant had submitted, so staff reached out to Ms. Hickok, who then provided the additional information requested. Based on the information provided by the applicant for a proposed use, the determination was made that it was a research laboratory with associated accessory storage. The Planning Department supports the use determination as it is written. Per Title 21, Chapter 5, Use Definitions, a research laboratory is a facility that is designed or equipped for basic or applied research or experimental study, testing, or analysis in the natural sciences or engineering, including any educational activities associated with and accessory to such research, and including research and analysis facilities operated by public agencies and designed to assure public health and safety. The use does not include facilities for the manufacture or sale of products, except as incidental to the main purpose of the laboratory. Information provided by the applicant for the use determination states the proposed facility will be operated by the General Services Administration and will support multiple scientific study groups to include the Volcano Science Center, the Alaska Volcano Observatory, the Alaska Science Center, and the USGS Alaska Regional Office. These scientific study groups will use the facility for research, analysis, and categorizing of materials collected from field research sites away from the main facility. The information provided with the application for use determination also clearly indicated that the area used for storage in the facility occupied more space than the area for the active treatment and categorizing of collected materials. While accessory uses are often smaller in area than the principal use, this is not always the case. The information provided indicates that the stored materials support the research activities of the facility, whether those activities are actively carried out in the building or are in support of the field research, collecting samples to be returned for analysis and research in the facility. The storage exists to support the research, therefore, staff determined the storage area to be accessory to the research use. The land use review staff carefully considered the information that was provided for the proposed use of the facility and determined that the proposed use is a research laboratory with accessory storage. When the determination of use was made, staff did not consider information provided from any outside source. An application for a use determination is for a proposed use and is not a representation of current or past operations of any facility. A proposed use type can only be determined by information provided by the applicant for a planned future use. The Planning Department recommends denial of this appeal. Dave Whitfield, the current planning manager, is attending and we are happy to answer any questions the board may.
Are there any other questions from the board? Seeing none, uh, the appellant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the appellant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the appeal should be granted. The board members and the staff may then ask questions of the appellant through the chair. Will the appellant or the appellant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record?
Good evening. Becky Lipson, B-E-C-K-Y-L-I-P-S-O-N.
Thank you. Please present your case.
Thank you, and I'd like to reserve three minutes for rebuttal. Good evening. At the time the municipality made their determination, they did not have the information that you do. This board is required by Title 21 to, quote, "conduct a full evidentiary hearing on an appeal and make its decision on the basis of this title, the evidence, and the argument presented," end quote. This is a different standard than, for instance, the Board of Adjustment, whose scope of review is limited to briefings and the record below. That distinction's meaningful, and you're not limited to just the information provided to staff. My client has, for the past 20 years, leased warehouse space to USGS. The lease was no longer renewable, had to be rebid, and was awarded to Winco as the lowest price bidder. However, Winco's building is Zoned B3, a zoning district that does not allow general storage, the proposed lease use, as a matter of right. So yes, Huffman appealed the protest twice, and the verdict was that whether the use is permitted in Winco's zoning district is a matter for the local zoning authorities, that's you. No court has determined whether the proposed use will comply with local zoning laws. It's up to you to decide whether the proposed use is research laboratory or something else. If you say something else, it goes back to staff. You don't need to pick the new use. Here, if you want to know how the space is going to be used, you look at what the tenant says it will use the space for. The procurement lease explicitly states, "The government intends to initially use the space for general storage." That's page 11 of your packet. The procurement goes into further detail about how approximately 97% of the space would be warehouse, the rest for battery and chemical storage and bathrooms. There's no mentions, no mention of offices, laboratories, no onsite research. Research laboratory is just a use Winco selected because it's permitted in B3. On page 15 to 16 of your packet is a sworn statement submitted by USGS prior to this use determination, quoting some of that language. "USGS uses the warehouse space primarily for storage of field gear and equipment. No staff are assigned to this location as a duty station. USGS will prepare rock geology samples in the warehouse using the rock saw equipment. Once the samples are prepared for analysis, they are brought back to the office building and shipped from the office. No sorting and studying is done at the warehouse. Approximately 75% of the warehouse is used for storage. The same uses will be done under the new lease." You can also look at the statements of USGS employee Edward Brown, submitted as part of the application, which I summarized on page 21, or 20 to 21 of your packet. Essentially, the warehouse is used to store gear for off-site research. Samples collected off-site are also stored and sometimes repaired before shipping for off-site analysis. This description is entirely consistent with how the space at Huffman has been used for the past 20 years. See pages 205 to 206 of your packet. Since USGS says the same uses will be done under the new lease, we also provided photographs of the space. You should have been provided those over email. I want to now go through those photographs, although I'm going to speed through them given time limitations. And actually, I was having technical difficulties before, so I, um, I would like the board to know that, uh, Brian Swartzen Truber, who took the photographs, is available. They've been shared on the screen by Mr. Whitfield, thank you. Uh, and I can go through those and answer specific questions, uh, after my presentation, if, if there's questions through the board, through the chair. Uh, in issuing a use determination, the director is required to consider 12 factors listed on pages two and three. In reality, use determinations also almost exclusively focus on the first factor, which at its core asks, "What is the principal use and what use is that most similar to under Title 21?" Here, Huffman says the principal use is storage. Winco says research laboratory. In preparation for this appeal, I spent half a day going through all past use determinations issued by the municipality dating back over 40 years. Patterns emerged for how a principal use was analyzed, none of which were employed here. For instance, the muni often looks at square footage. Here, the mount, muni found that storage is over 83%, is 83% of the premises. The muni gave no explanation for why square footage was not considered in their analysis. Not infrequently, the muni will determine that there are also multiple principal uses. The muni gave no explanation for why it did not analyze whether the storage use, which again, is by their calculation 83% of the square footage, was also a principal use. Moreover, the muni ignored past use determinations that said activities permitted in the B3 zoning district, such as office use, if conducted off-site, cannot justify warehouse use in B3. That's on page 25 of the packet. This means the stored items need to relate to onsite research, not off-site research. Here, most items stored, tents, boats, flotation devices, pallets, batteries, have nothing to do with the onsite processing and equipment testing and fabrication. Finally, historically, the muni also looks at what time is spent devoted to the use compared to other uses. Here, no staff are assigned, and on a normal week, staff time averages 20 hours a week. This means the premises is most used for general storage. Only a fraction of the use is preparation and equipment testing. I want to leave time for rebuttal, but please look at the photographs and then look at staff's analysis of the 12 factors. Look at factor one, look at factor five. None of those answers match the photos or the description of use from the USGS. None of those answers explain why the muni failed to analyze whether storage was also a principal use. Once the public hearing is closed, you'll have to decide whether to affirm or reverse the use determination. Affirming means looking at the photos and concluding that is what a research laboratory in Anchorage looks like. It's concluding that 83% of general storage is also not a principal use. I urge you to reject the determination and remand back to staff for further analysis. As I said, I'm available to answer any questions and can go through the photographs as requested. Thank you.
Thank you. You have three minutes for rebuttal. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, are there any questions from staff?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, staff shall now give their presentation. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the appellant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair.
We have no further comment. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the staff by the board members? Are there any questions of the staff from the appellant? And the appellant has indicated no. The hearing shall be open for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes. Individuals have three minutes. Time is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then will turn yellow. At the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board members, the staff, and the applicant. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2021-0014?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Keri Ann Baker, on behalf of Winco Anchorage Investors. Uh, my name is spelled K-E-R-I dash capital A-N-N, last name Baker, B-A-K-E-R.
Thank you. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Oh, pardon me. Uh, I need to swear you in?
Uh, I'm, I'm an attorney, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Um, Commissioners, staff, thank you very much for your time. Today, I want to tell you a little bit about what's not in our application. So, this particular case has now been challenged in two separate district, dis, different forums. And at each point in time, the deciding factors, the decider in those cases, determined that warehouse or storage was not a specific requirement of the USGS lease. Our, our client, Richard Shapiro, has invested significant time, money, and effort into Anchorage. He's the exact kind of person and the exact kind of entrepreneur that the city should be seeking to bring in. I know it must be very, very disappointing for Huffman to have lost a lease that they've had for over 20 years, and that's tough. But this kind of scorched-earth tactic, going from one place to the next place to the next place, just because you don't, you are the highest bidder on a competitive lease, shouldn't be rewarded. So, we agree that this board has the decision of looking at the use determination and the staff report and making a determination on whether a research laboratory is the appropriate use. We believe the packet, the materials, and the standards of the review that this board will be looking at will demonstrate that research laboratory is the proper use. So there's a couple of things that this board should consider when determining whether this, this is storage as a principal use versus research laboratory. First, these pictures are really interesting, but that's of a different building, a building that isn't even before this tribunal. They're interesting photos, but it's, they're simply irrelevant to the decision that is being made here today. The packet goes into great detail about the use that is going to be done. So, when this originally came up, what I did is I, I called the USGS and I said, you know, "One of the affidavits submitted by your staff member is a little confusing. And if you actually look above the parts that Ms. Lipson quoted to you, you'll see that there is references to research that is going to be conducted." So I talked to the people that were in charge, the people that are overseeing the building, and every single person that works or shows up in that building. And I said, "Tell me every single thing that you do." And then we wrote it all down in the affidavits. It's been submitted to you. So these, this is not a warehouse or a storage facility as a principal use. It exists, all of the storage exists to support the operations of the USGS. They're not storing kayaks to sell REI. The employees that are coming are not $15 an hour employees that are breaking down soap into smaller portions and shipping them off. These are highly sophisticated individuals. Most of them have masters, PhDs, or they're in their bachelor's training to be scientists. Those are not the kind of people that you normally would find in a warehouse, working an hourly job, breaking down storage materials. What happens is these, everything that is going to be in the so-called storage only exists because there is research going on. They will come to the research laboratory, they will get all of their materials, they will go out into a field, they will create a field laboratory, they will bring the materials back. Then they will divide the materials up, they will sort it. Many times, they'll have to treat it with acid and other materials. They will break it down into smaller portions, and then they will decide where that's going to go for further study. They will sometimes put things back so that they may have to come back and run additional experiments. And this is all done by masters, bachelors, and PhDs. If this were a true storage type of situation, you would see storage workers. You would see people that were working hourly wages, not people that are making critical proprietary decisions, such as how much, what types, uh, what, what decision. Oftentimes, they will put these samples underneath a microscope, they'll look at it, and they'll make further decisions about what should be done. Research laboratory, when you look at it in Title 21, it's almost as if it was written by the USGS for this exact situation. So, I see my time is up, and I really appreciate your time, and we would ask you to uphold the staff determination of the use determination of research lab, research laboratory. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, uh, of the member from the board?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Please come forward. Seeing no one else, this concludes the public's testimony. The staff, followed by the appellant, shall have the right of rebuttal. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No rebuttal. Thank you.
Does the appellant have any rebuttal?
Yes, thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Uh, please state your name.
Uh, my name is Becky Lipson, B-E-C-K-Y-L-I-P-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Ms. Baker spent a portion of her, um, testimony discussing how the individuals who are accessing the warehouse are highly educated. That is not disputed. That also does not govern what the use of this specific facility is. Those highly educated individuals are not using their degrees at this facility. They use their degrees in the field, performing research at their office, or a lab. But no staff are assigned to this warehouse, and, um, and this, the degree of their education is, is not relevant to the board's analysis. Likewise, the mission statement of an organization does not govern the use of how this, uh, facility is used. For instance, I can think of a thrift store that is operated by a hospital. The mission of the hospital is not, does not govern the use of that specific retail establishment. Because Mr. Whitfield has these photos up, I would like to use my remaining time to go through them, because I, I do think they are relevant. And as the USGS has indicated, that they will be using the new lease space exactly how they use the old lease space. That means everything you see here is going to be
Yes, thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Becky Lipsen, B-E-C-K-Y-L-I-P-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Ms. Baker spent a portion of her testimony discussing how the individuals who are accessing the warehouse are highly educated. That is not disputed. That also does not govern what the use of this specific facility is. Those highly educated individuals are not using their degrees at this facility. They use their degrees in the field, performing research at their office or a lab. But no staff are assigned to this warehouse, and the degree of their education is not relevant to the board's analysis. Likewise, the mission statement of an organization does not govern the use of how this facility is used. For instance, I can think of a thrift store that is operated by a hospital. The mission of the hospital does not govern the use of that specific retail establishment. Because Mr. Whitfield has these photos up, I would like to use my remaining time to go through them, because I do think they are relevant, as the USGS has indicated that they will be using the new lease space exactly how they use the old lease space. That means everything you see here is going to be transferred if USGS moves to Winko's space. All of these items would be moved to Winko's space. And I've been forewarned that the computer might stall if we try to do this. So, each of the photographs that you're seeing are, at this point, a specific bay. So, the bay is made up, the warehouse in this case is made up of seven bays. And so, you previously saw a bay. This is another bay. You can see racking. You can see pallets of items stored. Thank you. This is another bay, more items stored. Mr. Whitfield, if you just keep going. This is a long shot view of the warehouse. This is another bay with more racking. There's a flammable cabinet, chemicals, more items being stored. And again, I would ask the board to compare the items that you're seeing with the items described in the staff packet that was distributed to you. I know Ms. Calhoun gave a different description than was presented to the board. This is the fabrication area. This takes up approximately half a bay. I'm told each of the bays is approximately 1,800 square feet. I haven't done the math. It's about 14,000 square feet is what you're looking at. Another area in the warehouse, more. And that's all my time.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed, and the matter now rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Ms. McKay? Mr. Hale, seconds. Thank you. Ms. McKay, will you speak to your motion?
In case 2021-0014, I move that the appeal of a research laboratory use determination for the General Services Administration, GSA, tenant space lease located at 4831 Old Sword Highway be granted.
Thank you. And will you speak to your motion?
I do not intend to support my motion. This was a difficult case for me. The packet is nearly 300 pages of information, including many duplications, the entire text of GSA's request for lease proposal, and letters back and forth from attorneys on both sides. The request for use determination form is dated September 25, 2020. The petitioner is listed as Erin Lautarette. The documentation provided by the Boote Company in a memorandum dated October 2, with amendments dated October 6 and October 28. Then, the request asks for use determination of a research laboratory. The actual use determination by the municipality planning department is dated November 20. Municipality determined the use, as described by the applicant, has the characteristics of a research laboratory. It states the determination was based on a memo from the Boote Company dated October 28, a letter from Reeves Amodeo dated November 16, and affidavits from Edward Brown and Eric Sheaves. The appeal to the board by the Huffman Building P is dated December 10. So, I mean, it took me a long time to go through the information and get the sequence of how things occurred in my mind, so I had to write it out. The appeal contends that the use determination is erroneous and that the municipality made an error in categorizing the use as a research laboratory. For determinations, Title 21 states that all the relevant characteristics of a proposed use be assessed and lists 12 standards for review. It's a list of things to be considered and not hard and fast standards to be met like those for granting a variance. So, the central question is, did the municipality make an error? I find that the applicant did not meet the burden of proof that the appeal should be granted. The main factor considered by both municipality and the appellant is the first standard of review listed in Title 21. That is, what is the primary activity in the establishment? Much of Huffman's objection is based on percentages and an affidavit that we do not have access to. There are no percentages listed in Title 21 for the determination of what is the primary activity of a space. The appeal lists examples of other determinations done by percentage, none of which are research laboratories. The research laboratory space requirements, in general, research laboratory space requirements greatly vary by discipline. Not all research labs are beakers and bunsen burners. If the subject is rocks, the storage requirements are much different than for other types of research. Another argument by the appellant is that no staff is assigned to the space as their duty station. In my personal experience as archaeologists for the state and for the university, scientists do not have lab as their assigned office space. Huffman also labels sample preparation as manufacturing. I don't agree. The sorting, grading, analysis, and classification of samples from field research is research, not manufacturing. Just because it is shipped to other sites for additional research does not mean that research did not happen on site. Finally, I am persuaded by the affidavits from Edward Brown, a geophysicist with knowledge of the space in question, and Eric Sheaves, a GSA contracting officer with knowledge of the GSA leasing practices. And that's why I'm not going to support.
Thank you. Mr. Hale, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you to the chair. I appreciate Ms. McKay's synopsis there. It was good. Yeah, I haven't seen, I read the, well, I won't say entire packet, but a good portion of it, and I did see a lot of redundancy in there, and I don't see anything that would compel me to disregard what the staff did. I mean, the staff works on these issues for a living, you know? We all bring different expertise to the board, but we're not as knowledgeable as they are. And I didn't see anything in here that stood out to me that they didn't do a good job, that they didn't come to the right conclusion. I can't overturn something that they've done if I don't see anything compelling to get me to do that, so I'm also not going to support it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the board who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Hale?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No.
Ms. Savina?
No.
Mr. Lang?
No.
Ms. Emmerton?
No.
Mr. Quinn?
No.
Mr. Romerdal?
No.
And the motion fails unanimously. Continuing on with our agenda, are there any reports? Not seeing any. Are there any board member comments?
Just to welcome Andrew Romerdal to the board.
Yes, welcome, Mr. Romerdal. If there are no more board member comments, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And can I get a second? Moved and seconded, we are adjourned.